Welcome everyone to now our second COVID meeting where we're conducting the video live streaming again. And it saddens me that we have to meet this way, but I think in all precautions it's the best thing to do for everybody's health and everybody's safety. Did you notice everybody here is wearing masks? We have masks and I appreciate the fact that everybody is wearing their at home and outside when they can't control social distancing. Trends are going in the right direction for the state of New York and we're happy to see that. And hopefully we'll be able to soon be able to open up some of our businesses and establishments as we move forward. And we're doing that very cautiously, working with the state and our county and with their guidance. So everyone, wear your mask. I'd like to lead off with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to note that Trustee Nunaker is participating via livestream and will be commenting in, not physically here in the room. Everybody else is physically here in the room using the social distancing. Trustee, would you like to just go over the kind of the process that we're using? And sorry.
We are streaming live on Facebook. If you have a Facebook account and we do have a public comment section, you will be allowed to make public comments by typing them in. If you do not have a Facebook account, you can watch and listen to the meeting, but you cannot comment. One technological situation we have is that there's a fairly large delay between the live activity here and what gets placed online. So occasionally we will make a little bit of timeout so that if there are comments, the video feed can catch up with what's happening live. And that will happen occasionally when Trustee Nunaker votes as well. Other than that, I'll keep my lid down.
Thank you, Rick. All right, our first item on the agenda tonight is a tax payment resolution. This was brought forward as a result of the COVID pandemic. As the village board started looking at the issues that are dealing with not only our residents but our businesses, we thought it would be a wise gesture on our part if we could work out a way to have your July, your property tax payments broken into two pieces. One in July and one in September. And primarily what we did was we went through this, we drafted a resolution, we shared it with the county. The county has approved it and blessed us and the county has also now made this same resolution available to all the villages. And all seven of the eight villages have, are, have, and or will be adopting this resolution going forward. It is for the year 2020 taxes. I will read the resolution. So whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rhinebeck recognized that the current COVID-19 pandemic is creating significant financial hardship for the residents of the Village of Rhinebeck. And whereas the Board of Trustees has the power pursuant to Real Property Tax Law Number 1434 to provide for the payment. B, the taxpayer is not obligated to pay by installment and may pay the entire tax bill in whole by July 1 without penalty or interest. C, if any installment is not paid on or before the date is due, additional interest shall be added as provided by Number 1432 and 924A of the Real Property Tax Law for each month of the part thereof until paid. No such installment may be paid unless all prior installments, including interest, shall have been paid or shall be paid at the same time. D, if paid by installment, the first installment shall be due and payable to the village treasurer no later than July 1 with no interest. Failure or neglect by any owner of real property to pay the first installment on time is herein provided and shall be construed as an election to pay the total amount of taxes in one payment in the manner provided by law. And shall thereby disqualify the taxpayer from installment payment option. Such failure or neglect to pay timely will result in the standard interest, penalties, and other charges set forth by the Real Property Tax Law. The second installment shall be due and payable to the village treasurer on or before September 1. Failure or neglect to pay the second installment payment timely will result in the standard interest, penalties, and other charges set forth by the Real Property Tax Law. Taxes which are paid to a Real Property Tax escrow account may not be paid in installments. And unless renewed, this resolution shall apply only to the 2020 and 2021 tax year. And I have a motion to accept.
Motion.
So moved.
And I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank our treasurer Karen McGlaughlin because she really put together a wonderful Excel spreadsheet giving us like this, what you could characterize as some risk assessment. So thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Karen. We did a good job, didn't we? Yeah, all right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? We rate for Trustee Lord.
Oh, aye.
Oh, I said aye.
Yeah, no, excuse me.
I have an aye. Trustee Nunaker votes aye.
Aye, all right. Motion passed. Resolution is adopted for two tax payments. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda, medical and HRA renewal. This is part of our, every year we review our insurance policy, our medical insurance with our union. And anything adopted by the union is therefore adopted by all of the staff people that work for the village that are non-union as well. This year Marshall and Sterling, which was shared with all of you, was sent out the comparison and the agreement. And I just want to make a couple of notes that we had budgeted for 9%. The actual increase, the insurance, was came in at 6%, so it's advantage to our budget. I also like to note that one of the major changes in this is that the deductible, for example, a single taxpayer went from 783 to 834, but 15% is covered by the employee because part of our agreement is they cover 15% of that cost. The union rep has seen this policy and has worked with all of the union staff and their representatives. And they have all agreed and adopted the current insurance resolution. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resolution, I mean the insurance proposal by Marshall and Sterling for our next year for all of our union employees and village staff.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nice to see you again last night.
All in favor?
Aye.
Labor, Trustee.
Trustee Nunaker votes aye.
Aye, very good. Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is we're going to go into department reports. As we did last month, we are not going to go through every department report. We are only going to deal with the action items associated with those department reports. For instance, except for the treasurer's report, because our treasurer has a lot of action items. So I would like to open up to now Karen McGlaughlin for our monthly financial treasurer's report.
Okay, the, I'll just go through the main funds. The balance in the general fund at the end of the month was $180,879.58. The balance in the water fund was $341,141.55. And the balance in the sewer fund was $607,594.02. Vouchers presented for payment in the general fund total $37,358.16. In the water fund total $17,041.42. In the sewer fund total $51,806.62. We made a bond payment for the sewer aster expansion in the amount of $91,941.08. And we made a payment for the Duchess County Water and Wastewater Study Grant for $1,650. And in the water main project, we paid out $853,722.66. And we had one bill in the escrow for $240. An operating statement is provided with the revenue and expenditures through May 12 through this meeting. Water and wastewater, the billing and adjustments have been reviewed and signed off by the Water and Wastewater Department liaisons and are presented for authorization.
John, can you make a motion to accept water and wastewater on Brans behalf as well?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of both Water Department and Wastewater Department to accept the financials as presented this evening.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, tax collection. Unpaid water and sewer bills have been relevied on the tax, have been relevied to be put on the tax bills to be sent out June 1, 2020. My letter went into the county for the calculation of the tax warrant and we were just waiting for the resolution. And now we have the resolution. I'll send that to the county as well for the preparation of being able to split their payments into two. Transfers after, as per the adopted 1920 budget, amounts were funded and will be transferred to the capital as follows. From the fire department, $40,000. Streets, $7,500. Police, $10,000. Parks and Rec, $5,000. And to the sidewalk capital project fund, $7,000. The capital in water and sewer are to be determined because that's an ongoing thing until the end of the year. Budget amendments will be presented in June for the close of the 1920 fiscal year as of May 31. And the tax cap, the constitutional tax limit, and the copy of the 2020, 2021 budget has been filed with the New York State Comptroller's Office.
Good, thank you. I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Anything else, Karen?
I just had one item that I forgot to mention was regarding the EFC, the Water Main Project and the EFC funding. With the EFC grant, the EFC loan, the band, the short-term bonding, and the additional $450,000 that we borrowed, which will be part of the Water Main Project and part of highway upgrade projects. That's all in process right now. The 450 those funds have been received. There is a contingency in the EFC fund of $446,000, of which there is a balance of $116,948 left in that. And I think next on the agenda for the 450,000 additional funds is Mulberry Street. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, moving on. Next on the agenda is for the police and court report. For the police, what we have today is to review our contract with Sergeant of Police Sergeant Peter Dunn. Every four years, there is a new contract with Sergeant Dunn that we've put together. His current contract expires on May 31. And will continue then for four years up until May 31 of 2024. I'm not going to go through the whole contract. This is presented to the board. The board has had time to review it. I will ask if you have any questions in regard to the contract, but I first like to ask the motion to accept.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I didn't actually see the contract. Was it in the cloud?
No, because of some of the confidential information in there, it wasn't placed publicly. But you were sent an email which had the contract in it. Right, so you should have been able to receive that email and read it.
Yeah, I'm sure I did. I'm sure I received the email.
Thanks very much.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Okay, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Trustee, you vote the red side.
Very good. All in favor, very good. Sergeant Dunn will be happy. All right, next is the water department. We have the generator bid. Trustee Nunaker, you're on, how would you like to proceed with the generator bid?
Trustee Nunaker writes, we have a bid from Conway's. We can fine obtain bids on both items for about a year. He makes a motion to accept both. So I will second his motion.
Okay, any discussion? The only discussion I would have is if this has been reviewed by the resident of the Highland Road. Pause, pause.
Yeah.
Pause.
Well, residents want the generator though and the tank will be there.
Okay.
And it does be some sort of landscaping. I assume there would be some sort of landscaping.
That's another issue. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried, very good. Mixer, the mixer, we have a lot on the water tonight. The mixer engineering bid.
Trustee Nunaker votes aye.
I'm not hearing that. What do we have?
Trustee Nunaker says, our own engineer bids $4,800 to pursue the bid.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Trustee Nunaker, I hope they can hear.
Trustee Nunaker votes aye.
Very good. Okay, next, and we have the Grasmer Water Agreement on the agenda. And I will tell everybody that we have two people in our audience today maintaining social distancing and spacing. And that's our village engineer from Ty and Bond, which is Brandy Nelson, and Jonathan Mensch, who is the owner of Grasmer. And how the water lines will be constructed, the amount of gallons of usage that they would consume. And our contract is basically an agreement that we would have with the developer on supplying water. So our goal tonight is not to vote on this. Our goal tonight is to review the verbiage associated. I'd like to thank Paul Trustee Korshak for helping to sort all this out for us today because that was not clear from the original goal of this agreement. So having said that, I'm just going to open it up right now for discussion since we're not voting or approving. And the discussion on, if anybody has any discussion in regard to the agreement between the Village of Rhinebeck for the sale of water to Mensch Grasmer LLC, okay? While we have our guests, I only have two comments that I would like to make and I review just with both of the people who are here tonight. The first one is on the roads. We've experienced a lot of road repair as a result of our current water infrastructure improvements here in the Village of Rhinebeck. Where we did a lot of trench work and the original agreement from that trench work and the association hookup to the curb and the curb stops to all the customers that are there caused for a lot of rework of the road, which originally was planned just to be done with patching the trenching. What I'm not sure of in this contract is the verbiage that we would have in place for making sure our roads are returned to usable condition per the village standard. And I would like to see some verbiage associated with that to be added to this agreement to protect the village from having to go out and then repave the roads after all the work was done. I don't know. Jonathan, have you got any comment or Brandy, any comment on that?
No, I mean, I would, one of the requirements of the agreement is that we provide the detailed plans to Brandy and I think through Brandy to the board, which we've got to do a whole survey of where the lines are and the roads, all that, and then really come up with a much more detailed plan than we have now. And what we can agree to do if it works for everybody is to include some 90s as part of that. We would include a detailed plan, but also maybe a standard. It could be a good follow-up plan. That's, I mean, I haven't agreed with this.
Right, so that makes sense and we'll be able to review that line gentlemanly.
Brandy, I just had a question for Brandy. So is there a standard for that type of repair for a cut in the road to ensure that in essence it's quality that matches the rest of the surface, especially insofar it may get into, you know, let's say Route 9 or something like that? Is there something that you can present us with so that we align all of that?
Sure. Jonathan and his team are aware that any of the work along the DOT, right, we will have to conform to DOT standards and we have very specific requirements.
Okay, good.
The village also has some code requirements for infrastructure improvements and there are standard practices for patching trenches.
We'd just like to have that all match up.
So I have a couple of comments I'd like to read. Victoria Lee, turn this. Kind of what's under Lee here. We are asking the board to conceptually approve terms of the agreement, she writes. And then she also adds that on page three, the scope of work requirement requires approval of the village engineer. So I guess that would be part of the TBA. And Trustee Nunaker says, in favor of passing a resolution stating the village board is in agreement with the terms outlined in the agreement between the village and Mensch Grasmer LLC. And we need to approve that.
But we do not have a resolution.
No, we don't have a resolution, right.
So we can't vote on a resolution that we don't have.
So we can do a sense of the board.
We can approve the terms of the, the terms and the language in the proposal. We can adopt it and therefore we're not voting on it, but we can as a board agree to the terms.
Yeah, provided that some amendments were made.
Yeah. And I have one other comment which I discussed, and that was the issue of the master meter and how the master meter would work in regard to if we ever had an event that there was a fire. And I have also spoken to Jonathan and Brandy about this. Because the master meter cannot separate how much water is used for consumption, how much would be used for fire in the current, unless there's a design for like a dual flow meter, if there's one of that capacity that could be used to be able to safely regulate. And this is really for the protection of the developer and of them so that we're not charging you for consumption of water that would be used for, if a sprinkler system goes off, fire truck are there pumping out a hydrant, whatever. So that we have verbiage in the agreement that really protects the both of us on how we would build for that usage.
Hey, Nolan, I very much appreciate you bringing that up. I mean, what I would suggest as a concept is that as we're operating, we'll develop a usage history pretty quickly. And what we could do in the event of a fire, which we really partner with.
I don't think that we never have.
But if it does, we would have, we sort of have a daily use, maybe the trailer on every day with something along those lines, which would then give us a benchmark and we would then pay for that day, whether it's a fifth day place, we would pay that amount, but not the excess amount. The excess amount would be such a requirement.
The other concept is a dual flow meter, which we did at Boomer Hollow for just exactly this issue, to service their fire hydrants at Boomer Hollow. Is that, would that be an option that we, because then it's an accurate reading when that large line would open up and demand the service, we would have an accurate reading of the water.
Brandy, do you have a sense whether that would work? I'd have to talk to our engineer about that. I know individual meters would end up, just given the number of buildings, would end up getting more expensive. I can talk to him about it.
And is it worth putting that language in this document?
In my opinion, it's a design issue that we can deal with when the detailed engineering plans are put together.
All right, well then if we can leave it out and make it part of the design, it's just a matter of making sure we collect the water, we charge accurately for water.
Right.
That's my main point, right?
Okay, so I do a question. I believe that Trustee Nunaker was recommending that we do pass a resolution as per our attorney's email of 448 that says the resolution should be limited to the village board. It's in agreement with the terms outlined in the agreement. You will need to pass a final resolution authorizing approval and execution. So I think what Trustee Nunaker was proposing, that we create a resolution to say that we are in agreement with the terms outlined. And if it's possible to do that just for us procedurally, that would be very helpful.
I think we're saying the same thing. We can adopt, we can agree to adopt the terms of the agreement. Well, not really adopt. We can agree to, we can agree to the terms that are specified in this document. Right, and I think that's the intent.
That's the intent.
It is, the intent is that we're not adopting the resolution. Is, is the intent is that we're not adopting the resolution because we've asked for some specific wording to be modified, and it really requires the town to go through the full secret process before we can adopt a, a resolution on this. So, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the terms of the agreement. I mean, we approved, I don't want to use the word adopt. I'm going to amend that. That we approved the terms of the agreement as noted with the corrections that we noticed this evening.
Seconded.
Can I just read, no offense to Trustee Munich, if he was here. I mean, I think we're all saying the same thing, Mr. Mayor, but what Trustee Munich in his last exchange late afternoon with, with counsel, what we should accomplish this evening is a resolution that we agree with the terms of the agreement as presented, subject to final approval and execution of secret.
Who's that one?
Rick, that was at 426. I think council did respond at 429. Again, this is an expression of intent to provide order. No, well, again, I'm just sharing what Brandy said to all of us.
No, I, I got it too.
Yeah, we got it. We got it all. But the most important thing is.
Did you use the word resolution?
Then, we're not going to use the word resolution.
Okay.
We're going to, we're going, I, I made the motion, and you can amend the motion if you want. The motion is that we adopt the terms, we approve the terms of this agreement, right, as proposed with the amendments that we suggested tonight.
So, I second that.
Until the final resolution can be adopted when the seeker has gone through to the town, to the town of Rhinebeck. And we, as a, I want to further that to an extent, we are a, what's the right word?
Involved agency.
Involved, thank you. We are an involved agency in the town of Rhinebeck seeker process. Right? Because without that, we cannot move forward.
Right. And in the future, what you'll be doing is you'll be authorizing the mayor entrance to an agreement and execute that.
Yeah.
So, you're not going that far at this time.
Right. We're not going that far yet. All right.
So, you have a second.
Okay. Second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to add a few points. I think you brought up a good point, Mr. Mensch, which is that we're an involved agency. And this is one of those circumstances where I think we have to take the secret process very seriously as an involved agency. And so, I want to encourage this board to be deeply involved in the process in partnership with the town. As you know, the secret process is really much broader than the word environment implies. It includes evaluation of a whole host of potential impacts on the communities and the involved agencies. And I think it behooves us, and so many of us here, particularly in the village, our interest in preserving the character of the village as well as preserving the general environment on the broadest possible scale, that the board take quite seriously the fact that the town is involved in the secret process, and that the board actually participate actively in that process as an involved agent.
That brings up a good point. I mean, we don't have, what is our role to attend these meetings and part of the secret process that are conducted by the town? Can we appoint a person that can be therefore part of this review process representing the board? Or is it we just go to all the meetings? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think what it is, it provides a formal vehicle to comment on the application to the planning board. Because what happens is, once the planning board has a complete application, I'm not certain if I'm just reading anyway, I'll copy upstairs, but I believe it's, that's part of the reason we want to get an option for, for this document, because once the planning board that has a full application, and the deal was to be a full application, that this entire application is then sent out to be volatilized. That's the state soil preservation office, that's Dutch County Planning, that's in this case, now this is going to be included with the board. So, you've got a complete package of information. You didn't have a period of time to review that information and provide any comments in the way.
So, I, I think that it behooves us to really clarify that, have our attorney take a look at that, because I think the general notion of involved agencies could, you know, encompass a lot. And I think we're more closely involved, you might say. We're one community here, it's Rhinebeck, and including the hamlet of Rhine Cliff. And so, we're going to feel the direct impact. And I think that first, we need clarity from our attorney as to what our exact role is, how will we participate? And I'm just wondering, it's one thing to get a, a document, here's the application comment, but we're going to, you know, the planning board's going to vote on it and basically say yea or nay versus our involvement, where in essence, a lot of the impact is going to come to the village, this one square mile. And we want to understand it thoroughly, and vet it out thoroughly, and be able to understand and, and act upon it appropriately with, you know, eyes wide open. So, I think there is a matter of degree here that we've got to understand, and I would like to see that the board follows up on this with the attorney, and then gets some instruction and guidance, both from the engineer and from the attorney, as to what our real role in this is as, quote unquote, a single community, not just the town versus the village.
Yeah. And I can tell you, back in September, we did send a letter on behalf of the board of trustees indicating the role of the village as an involved agency, and to be sure to be included on communications and before. And then last week, I spoke with the town's engineer and reiterated that verbally to them, and he had said they were waiting for some of these sorts of housekeeping things, these letters of intent about services to go forward before the neighborhood seeker again. So, sounds like they're, we're in the right place to get involved.
Okay. So, it sounds to me, though, that there's like two tiers to this, which is kind of the regular process, but I think quite frankly, we should consider a deeper involvement, an arrangement between the town and the village apart from this, okay, to say, look, this is how we're going to proceed with this. And I think we should explore that.
I tend to agree with you, because one is to say, we get the package, and now we have it, now we're involved participant, but I would like to say that we're, we're involved prior to getting the package, so that we're not just receiving the package and then have to respond to it. We're involved in a process of the development of the package.
Well, we're submitting the entire package on Friday this week. That's the full engineering.
Yeah, but the town, the town is going to go through some, what we're saying is not you, the developer, we're saying as part of the town process now, we want to take a more active role in the, in the, in their, in their review so that we understand it, either with our engineering, you know, by our side, and our legal by our side, so that when the package is finally set and done, and they send it out, we're prepared. Does that make sense?
And that's not uncommon at all for communities.
Is that better, Rick?
Yes, now you're, now you're.
This is very comfortable.
They are the old mic, not the new mic, so.
Johnny, you have to take it like an M.
Yeah. All right. We're going to move, we're going to move on. Right? The next, next thing on the agenda is the Rhinebeck Central School's graduation banners. This is a yearly thing by the, by the Rhinebeck School, and everybody knows this year the grad, this year the graduating class of 2020 is having probably one of the most unique experiences ever witnessed in our generation to have a graduation experience like this. And they, what they typically do is they ask that, this has been done before, that they allow to be put banners on the poles in the village of Rhinebeck. I believe that this is the least we can do to support this graduating class of 2020. It'd be nice if we could do more, but parades are not allowed. All right? But I would like that, I would like to make a motion that we allow the Rhinebeck Central School District to place their banners on our, their pole banners in our village to recognize the graduates, right? And we're asked, and, and ask for your approval in this yearly tradition.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor said, our hearts go out to these seniors. No prom, no graduation, no senior pranks. For all the seniors, the colleges as well. It's really heart breaking.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? I'll wait for Trustee Munich.
Trustee Munich votes aye.
Very good. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the RFP for legal services. I'm not sure when this went out, but it went out virtually days right before the pandemic. And there was a deadline date that passed during the pandemic, and I do know of one legal firm, and there may be others, that were so involved in the process of dealing with COVID-19, I would like to ask for the board's approval to extend the RFP for those legal services out for, until, I don't even pick a date, but I'm going to say at least several months, because we have a lot to get through with dealing with the current situation with COVID, and hopefully coming out of it, that our legal firms are going to be very busy during, during this process, and may not have the time to dedicate to do this. So, I would like to propose that we set a new date, right, and that new date be October 1st, and we could review it at that time and make sure that, I'd like to make a motion to the board that we extend the RFP for legal service to October 1st of 2020.
Seconded.
Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Trustee Munich votes aye.
All right.
Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you for coming. Next on the agenda was the man's approval. The man's approval, we're not up on the cloud for everybody to review, so this is going to be moved to next month, and so we will bypass that, and we'll vote on them at the next agenda. Leading into our personal April anniversaries, which is always a pleasure, we have Police Officer Dan Alberg, who is now 29 years of service, effective of April 10th. So, congratulations, Officer Alberg. We're proud to have you as part of our village police force, and hope you're here for a much longer time. With that, there's, and the only other thing I'd like to say is correspondence is on file at the clerk's office, and is also on our webpage, which is posted by our village clerk, Martina McClinton. And I'd like to make a motion, unless anybody has anything else, a motion to adjourn at 7:45.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained?
I think that's, I think that aye is.
I think this is a.
Thank, I'd like to thank everybody who's watching this live, and please, everybody, wear your mask whenever you're out in public and cannot control social distancing. It's not for your protection, but it's for everybody else's protection as well, and I appreciate anything you can do to help us read our agenda. Thank you, and good night.
Good night.